Vice Chair Glenn Shealy and I will be chairing in the absence of our Chairman Jones tonight. At this time, I'd like for councilmen Daniels to lead us in the qualification, please.
Members of the way, oh, wise and everlasting Father, we come at this point in hour of the evening. Heavenly Father, we just thank you this evening for the sunshine and rain. And Father, we pray that you will be in our decision-making here tonight. But amen. Saluda County. We thank you, Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Now, if you would stand by the pledge of allegiance, bearing in mind that yesterday was Veterans Day. And I give personal thanks to all of the veterans in my life for the service that they have all provided. I'd like to lead this to the flag.
The United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Shealy. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time for the approval of minutes for October 8th and November 2nd, 2018. You can tell we're not in a budget season because there haven't been two meetings since the last month. So, I'd like to entertain a motion for that.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? At this time, I'd like to call for, it's a roll call vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is not here. District three, and I as vice chair, vote yes, and the chairman is not present. So, the motion passes. At this time, I'd like to see if there are any reports from county officials, beginning with district one.
District one would like to report, we had a wild weekend awards over the weekend. A few hundred peoples dropped in with their horses and all, but it was all good.
No real reports, but congratulations to everyone that was elected and, you know, we appreciate the service of all our veterans.
I have a couple of things. One is that our tribe has increased by one up here. DJ is the proud father of a young lady by the name of Hayden Caroline who was born on Halloween. And mother and child doing fine, and I think DJ's holding up okay. He says he's not losing much sleep, so just wait. It'll happen, it'll happen. Anyway, congratulations. And then also for the election results, just to recap what we're dealing with here. Mr. Frank Daniels has come back in as district one. Derek Jones has come back in. He ran in opposed as chair, as did Mr. Frank. And then Justin Anderson will be coming in district three. He will be sitting in this chair beginning in January. Memphis Forrest continues to be our auditor. And Tiffany Shaw has been voted in as the treasurer. So, those are the results as we know them, and we wish the best of luck to every one of them. And then also later on, what a very important item that was also on the ballot was the 2018 Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Referendum. And we will be addressing that later on in this meeting. And that is all I have at this time. So, let's begin with business. I'd like to entertain a motion for the second reading on ordinance number 10-18. An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Saluda County, South Carolina, Chapter 6, Building and Building Regulations, Section 6-7 for Distance and Setback Requirements. And what that is in a nutshell is that no structure shall be located closer than 25 feet to the right-of-way of a street or closer than 20 feet from another structure. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is not here. District three, and as vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. And the motion passes. Now, we'll have the second reading on ordinance number 11-18. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 6-14 to change Section 5, use of premises of the T-hanger Lease Agreement attached to and made part of ordinance number 6-14. Now, basically what this is, is that upon signing a lease agreement, the less see has 30 days to place an airworthy aircraft in the hanger. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four is not here. And district three, and as vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. At this time, I'd like to recognize Toby Horn for consideration of the security and camera system for the Criminal Investigations Division building. Josh Martin will be joining him to explain some of the technical aspects of this.
Good evening. We're here to request money for security on the investigative building we have out there. I think this was part of a planned project that we had done before, but this was the latter part of it. Initially, I think we went into it and we thought we was going to do this in phases. This is just the last step of everything. We need to secure that building. Because of some of the stuff that we do in it, one of the big things that I'm doing now in the city are forensics. In that building, there is a robot that operates, and somehow it can operate when I'm not present. That leaving that device sitting there operating to do the forensics. I can't lose chain custody control of devices at the time, so I pretty much have to lay there until it's done. So, I'm asking for y'all to, at least at this time, I think Josh has got some things that needs to be done as well, but we're asking at least the locks to be put on the building at the time, the access control to the building, and then later on, let's come back and look at the camera system in the building as well.
And what you have before you, you have a quote for the access control system as well as the camera system. Originally, the intention was for both to be voted on tonight. However, some questions have come up that have prompted some further research into the camera side. Just questions that we will make sure that we do our due diligence on. So, the request is tonight to vote on the access control portion of that quote, and we will bring the cameras back to you hopefully at your next meeting.
Okay. All right, let me fit this in a motion. So, we are not doing the complete project tonight.
That is great.
We're only be doing a portion of it. See how this motion sounds, okay? Entertain a motion for a joint systems company to install the access control system in the Criminal Investigations Division building in the amount of $4,035.42 to be paid from the public building repair reserve account. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Do you all have any questions?
Toby, you said secure the locks on the doors?
It's to secure the locks and access control to kind of limit the access of people just walking in. We just can't have people just walking in the building right now. It's just regular door locks on the building.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Any other?
This will pretty much get you up and running on the camera system, right?
That is, that's.
This is like the final thing.
That is another thing on that building.
I think like me and Josh were talking about earlier, that I think the camera system has county-wide implications to what goes on there. So, I think any little bit more information before.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four is absent. And district three, and as vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Okay, under new business. We have a couple of visitors with us tonight, and if they're down, I can call on them if I need them. Jonathan, I'm just giving you a hard time. What this is about is we have Tommy Paradise with us tonight from Edgsville County. And the, and then Jonathan Larry with the Economic Development Partnership. And then, I forgot your name, I'm sorry, but with Project Scott. We had the opportunity to enter into a multi-park, industrial park with Edgsville County. And I'd like to read the ordinance, the first, this is the first reading of the ordinance, and then I will do a little bit of explainings to help you better understand what's going on, okay? I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading on ordinance number 12-18 by title only. An ordinance for the development of a new joint county industrial and business park pursuant to Section 4-1-170 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended in conjunction with Edgsville County, referred to as the park, such park to be geographically located in Edgsville County. Item number two, the execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Edgsville County as to the requirement of payments of fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes with respect to park property and the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park. Item three, the distribution of revenues from the park to the counties and relevant taxing entities. And number four, other matters related thereto. The Saluda Edgsville, that is the title of the ordinance, and this is the first reading. But, in layman's terms, the Saluda County, the Saluda Edgsville Multi-County Industrial Park Agreement concept, it was created through the state statute allowing the joining counties to jointly participate in the recruitment of industry or business. It can mean any number of arrangements. They either both contribute something or one maybe contributes a name and is something of a benefactor in this process. The two counties will negotiate a sharing of the revenue. For us, it's going to mean that there will be a 1% receipt of revenue from the host county, Edgsville County. And this is basically a lend call for Saluda County. We have entered into this type of agreement before. And the auditor annually bills the host county for that amount that is negotiated. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Or is there anything that either of you would like to add?
May I have a question?
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Tommy, would you come up and...
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I know what it's all about. You have an existing company, right?
I can't say that.
Okay, we won't go there, probably.
I'm sorry, but, you know, confidentiality right now is, you know, is important to the company. That's why we use a code name, not trying to do anything underhanded or sneaky. That's just the way these things work. And part of that is to limit what the competition finds out. But basically, they're going to invest two and a half million dollars or more in Edgsville County. And that will go in as part of that fee-in-lie arrangement that Edgsville County has with them. There's the special source revenue credits they receive. To receive those credits, they have to be in a multi-county industrial park. And that's why we reached out to Saluda County to see if you would participate in being the non-host sponsor of the park. The park is basically on paper. There's really no infrastructure. There's no maintenance. There's no upkeep. And we'll retain 99% of the fee load, and 1% will come to Saluda County. So, that basically means we're getting some free money here, kind of. As Mr. Williams referred to it, it's Melox money. I thought I understood it that way, but since you're here, I figured I'd ask. Yeah, that's the way it is. There's, you know, basically, for that signature on the piece of paper and that, in three readings, you get a check. Now, how much that check will be right now, I can't tell you. If they put two and a half million dollars in, be one thing. If they put three, five, it'll be a little bit more. But right now, the company is holding that close to idle, to be honest with you. It's not that I'm being sneaky and not telling you. I really don't know and don't want to know. That way, I can't let something loose that I don't need to. I like the idea of us working together, county side, county side anyway, so. We, I do think, I mean, Saluda County is a great county to work with. You know, I've worked with Paget, and Shealy, and Jones, and Mr. Daniel. You know, it's just a good relationship. Anything else?
Mr. Paradise, you answer what I wanted to know and enlighten.
I think so.
Thank you. Okay, this time, I'd like to call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is absent. And as district three, and vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Okay, moving along. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading on ordinance number 13-18 by title only. An ordinance to grant Saluda County Water and Sewer Authority the option to purchase two tracts of real property located off of North Balknight Terry Road in Saluda County, composed of a 17.20 acre tract and a 4.60 acre tract totaling 21.8 acres, being a portion of tax map number 099-00-00-016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think we have a representative here.
Yes, sir.
Would you come up?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Jason Vell with Saluda County Water and Sewer Service. How are you, sir?
Would you enlighten us what you want to do here?
Yeah. We're working to try to collaborate with the county and with the town of Saluda and Saluda CPW to help improve the sewer that we're able to provide throughout the county. This would be a great first step in moving towards that.
I talked with you before. I think that this would be a good step going forward, really helping the county out if this materializes and goes forward like we hope.
There's a long way to go, but this would be a great first step for us.
I don't know, have any questions or anything else?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, hearing enough of the discussion, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four is absent. And as district three, and as vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Now, we are approaching the referendum for the Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Referendum. There is a resolution that I'm going to read to you, and it's going to take a little while, so just be patient, okay? All right. And then after that, I will entertain a motion. This is a resolution of Saluda County, South Carolina, declaring the results of the 2018 Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Referendum and other related matters. Item number one, South Carolina Code, annotated section 4-10-300, Capital Project Sales Tax Act authorizes the county to impose a 1% sales and use tax subject to a referendum for the purpose of funding capital project needs in the county. Item number two, according to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act, the Saluda County Board of Voter Registration and Elections, the board, held a Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Referendum on November 6, 2018. The referendum as follows. Shall a special 1% sales and use tax be imposed in Saluda County for not more than eight years, beginning on the May, beginning on May 1, 2019, to raise the revenues, which will be applied to pay directly the cost of or to pay debt service on bonds issued to defray the cost of certain capital improvements set forth below for the county? And shall the county be empowered to issue either at one time as a single issue or from time to time as several separate issues, general obligation bonds of the county and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,400,000 to be repayable solely from the sales tax and other available sources? The proceeds of which shall be used to defray the cost of the capital improvement needs of the county, including specifically the following purposes listed in order of priority with estimated cost. The projects are: Saluda County Library for Saluda County, $125,000; the Saluda County Animal Shelter for Saluda County, $125,000; the Ridge Spring Downtown Revitalization and Economic Development for $175,000 for the town of Ridge Spring; the reconstruction of bathrooms at Brooks Royston Park with the Saluda Recreation District for $50,000; and the Saluda County Detention Center for Saluda County at $8,434,304. Conditions and restrictions on the use of the sales and use tax revenue collected under the Capital Project Sales Tax Act. The capital project sales and use tax shall be used and expended for procurement, design, engineering, construction, or improvement or similar type uses of the projects listed above. Net proceeds of the sales and use tax must be expended for the purposes stated, with some of the projects listed above expected to be funded simultaneously. The completion of the above projects funded by the sales and use tax is subject to acquisition of property and right-of-way design and engineering considerations, funding of projects from other sources, bids in excess of project estimates, qualifications of bidders, cost overruns, financing costs, exhaustion of net sales and use tax revenues prior to the completion of the projects stated above, and other unforeseen circumstances and conditions. Which if any of these circumstances are encountered, the county council reserves the right to make adjustments to the priority of the projects as originally submitted by the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. Sounds like it was written by an lawyer. Instructions to voters. All qualified electors desiring to vote in favor of imposing the tax for the stated purposes shall vote yes. All qualified electors opposed to levying the tax shall vote no. According to South Carolina Code, annotated section 4-10-330F, once the county has received the referendum's returns, the county council must declare the referendum's results by resolution. And the county council received the referendum certified returns from the board on November 9, 2018. Therefore, the Saluda County Council resolves that. The county council acknowledges the board certified the referendum's results on November 9, 2018 to the county and the South Carolina Department of Revenue. As certified by the board, the county council declares the referendum was favorably approved with 53% of the votes cast in favor and 47% of the votes cast against. The capital project sales and use tax authorized by the referendum will be imposed according to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act. The referendum's results, as declared by this resolution, are not open to question except by a suit or other proceeding instituted no more than 30 days from this resolution date, adopted at the regular meeting of Saluda County Council on November 12, 2018. And that is that. And yes, it passed. And so, the next county council will have quite a project in front of them, and it will be this resolution. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt this resolution declaring the results of the 2018 Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Referendum and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank our committee for all the hard work they did putting this together.
At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is absent. And I, as district three, and as vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. David Nizostica, CPA, Richard Nizostica Firm, to present the audit financial statements for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Nizostica. I'm a CPA with the firm, Richard Nizostica, located in Lexington, South Carolina. And jump into the audit report, and feel free to stop me with any questions you might have. You turn to pages three and four. This is actually independent auditor's report, so this is a report that I issue. We've issued an unqualified opinion. This is the best opinion we can give, meaning there aren't any material modifications or problems to be pointed out or adjusted. And the numbers presented are the representation of management. So, this is the same opinion we've given previously. We'll just review the financial statements really quick. You turn to page six. This is the statement of net position. This is a balance sheet for the entire county. It's all consolidated into one column there called governmental activities. This report is done on a accrual basis of accounting, so it's a little bit different than the balance sheet a couple pages back in that it has the capital assets listed, all the buildings, land, and equipment. It also has the net OPEP obligation, which is the retirement benefits offered to employees. That's about three quarters down the page. And then two below that, it also shows the net pension liability. So, the retiree OPEP obligation is at $4 million, and the net pension liability through the state retirement system is at $12.2 million. Net position at the end of the year, which is the equity in the county, is at $249,303. You move on to page seven. This is called the statement of activities. This is the income statement. This one, again, is consolidated. There's the income statement on a couple pages after this one as well. This one's different in that it includes the adjustment for the retirement system pension expense and also for depreciation. Those are two large expenses. I think one was $800,000, the one was $900,000. The county does pay all of its contributions to the state retirement system and is up to date on those contributions. So, you start in the left-hand column. That's the expenses. Then you work your way to the right, and you work your way down. So, overall, there's a change in net position of a decrease of $2 million. So, the net position at the beginning of the year went from $2.3 down to $249,000. The county also implemented GAZB 75. That's related to the calculation of the retirement benefits. The county hires an actuary to compute the total liability. The previous guidance said that the county could expense the estimated liability over a 30-year period. The new guidance says that you'll recognize the liability right away. And I can show you the figures there, but the liability went from about $1.8 million up to $4 million. And again, it's actuarial calculation that the county hired to perform. You move on to page nine. This is the balance sheet, so this one doesn't include any capital assets or any pension liabilities. Main asset here is listed cash. Total cash in all the funds is at $8.2 million. The general fund is the main operating fund, and that's in that first column. The cash in the general fund was a little over $2 million. And then the fund balance, which is the equity in the main operating fund, is a little over $2 million. So, that represents about two months' worth of operating expenses, and that's a good operating metric to have. It's between two to three operating months in your fund balance. You turn over to page 11. This is a budget actual summarized version. So, budget figures were at 11.6 for revenue, and actual came in at 12.2 for positive variance of $562,000. Total expenses were at $12.7 million versus $12.3 actual for positive variance of $342,000. The fund balance did decrease this year $187,000 for the fiscal year. Beginning on page 13 is the footnotes to the financial statements. They're pretty standard from year to year. The ones I normally point out are page 21 is the long-term debt of the county. There were two general obligation bonds at the end of the year. One for $565,000 and one for $6,853. So, the smaller bond was paid off just recently, so you only have the one for $565,000. And then at the bottom of page 21, it shows the maturities for the next five years of principal and interest. You turn to page 35. This is required supplement. If you turn to page thirty-five, this is required supplementary information, um, as it discussed about the employee retirement benefits, um, the net OPEB obligation, and it shows the calculations for the past, uh, like, seven or eight years there, from going back to June of two thousand eleven to June of two thousand eighteen, where, which we just performed the actuarial study, and you can see the, uh, estimated cost is in that first column. So, back in two thousand eleven, estimated cost was at a hundred thirty-four thousand, and then estimated cost now is projected to be three hundred eighty-six thousand. Um, then you look to the column to the right, and you can see the actual cost of providing employee health insurance or retiree health insurance, uh, started at twenty thousand, and then now it's up to fifty-four thousand, so it's still pretty reasonable. And then you can see off to the far, column in the far right, the, uh, the, the county would have the, the option to put aside monies to fund the retirement obligations if they wanted to, or, or do it as a pay-as-you-go basis, which is what they're doing now. Um, so the liability has been increasing each year, and you can see now, it's, it's at projected four million dollars. On page thirty-six, the net pension liability with the state retirement system, uh, similar, similar calculation is done, except it's performed at the state level. Um, state retirement system hires actuaries, and they calculate the, uh, pension liability, and then that's divided up into all the participating entities. The county participates in the state retirement system, which is SCRS, and then the police officers retirement system below, uh, and you can see the percentages that the county is, so for the state retirement system, it's point zero three percent, and the police officers at point one three. Uh, the county's required to, to report their share of the liability on their books, so for the state retirement system, it's at eight point five million, and for, for police officers, at three point six million. The county does make all their contributions as required, um, in the middle of each of those, uh, reports is the contribution percentage, so for the state retirement system, the contribution percentage was at thirteen point four, and for state retirement system, and then fifteen point eight for police officers retirement systems. And then you can see at the bottom of each report, um, the amount that, that was funded. Um, so currently, the state retirement system is at fifty-three percent funded, so ideally, you'd want to have a hundred percent funded, but probably more recently would be about seventy-five percent funded, and then for police officers, um, it's at sixty percent funded, and again, you probably want to have about a seventy-five percent number there. Um, and you can also see the, um, the total funding percentage has gone down from fifty-nine percent down to fifty-three, and fifty-seven, or sixty-seven percent down to sixty. And so what that'll mean for the county is that they've incurred higher, uh, contribution rates for employees, and that'll probably continue going forward. Um, you can see in the state retirement system, the, the original contribution percentage was at ten point seven five, and that was increased up to thirteen point four, and safer police officers going from thirteen up to, to fifteen percent. Um, this year was a little bit different in that the states actually chipped in some money to help cover some of the retirement expenses, um, but you can see with the pension liabilities increasing and the amount, um, that, that the retirement systems have there, you're going to continue to see higher, uh, contribution percentages for the employees until something changes with that. Um, page thirty-eight, the budget and actual, that just shows the detail, so that the detail for general funds, special revenue, um, debt service, and capital projects. Um, if you have any questions on that, I'm glad to answer at any time. That concludes my presentation of the financial statements and audit report, unless you have any other questions.
In detail.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the audit financial statements for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, as presented by Mr. Inzostica. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four is absent, and I as district three and vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, the health insurance increase on the employer's portion, and I would like to entertain a motion to fund from contingency, an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars for the employer's portion of the county health insurance increase for January one, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is absent, and I as district three and vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Item number six, um, this is for Saluda County Fire Board appointment. I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Jerry Greer to the Saluda County Fire Board as Ridge Spring Fire Department's representative, retroactive to October one, two thousand eighteen, filling an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is absent, and I as district three and vice chair, I vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Okay, at this time, we've exhausted the gen, agenda, but I would like to entertain a motion for council to go into executive session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy, eight, one, and two of the South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen seventy-six, as amended, to discuss item one, personnel in the clerk of court's office, and item two, personnel in the roads and bridges, and to receive legal advice to return at the call of the vice chair. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four is absent, and I as district three and vice chair, vote yes, and the chairman is not present. Uh, possible action may come out of executive session, exec, the executive session on personnel in the roads and bridges department, and we are in executive session.